Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, April 17, 2018. We'll begin by calling this meeting to order and standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. And with that, we're in our public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will go, and I don't believe we have Student Advisory Council tonight. Is that right, Dr. Smith?
I don't think so.
Okay. So we're not quite at 7:35 for our school choice public hearing, so we'll go a little bit out of order. And we will go down to my section. So as you've all know, as has been shared with you, there was a recent open-meeting-law complaint filed by Mr. Dan Lieber. I've touched base with town council on this, and his recommendation is that we formally receive the complaint tonight and that we refer to him for further investigation, review, and response. So I'll just ask for motion to that end.
Mr. Chairman, I move the school committee to approve the referral of the open-meeting-law complaint to town council for further action.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this? All in favor. Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we also have a request from the Human Rights Commission. So what this is, is the Human Rights Commission has asked, to my knowledge, both the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to up the appointments for this year from 1 to 2 to help facilitate their work. So just for the public, we are not voting tonight on who to appoint to the Human Rights Commission. We are simply voting on whether or not to increase the appointments that the school committee does have from 1 to 2. So I'll ask for motion to that.
Mr. Chairman, I move the school committee to approve the appointment of an additional commissioner to the Human Rights Commission as presented.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Markham, please.
So do we have, I assume by the nature of this request, that we have the authority to just add members to the Human Rights Commission?
So that was something that I had inquired about. Per the Human Rights Commission's charter, they solicit their requests from several bodies around town, one of them being the school committee. Their understanding is that as long as this body chooses to appoint an additional member and gives ourselves the authority to do so, then we can do that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one more question.
Please.
How are we going to go about soliciting interest in an appointment?
The Human Rights Commission has actually already begun that process. There are already applicants for this position. We've just received them very recently through Dr. Smith. They'll be distributed to the school committee, and it is on the agenda for the next meeting on the 25th.
So that would be similar to last time, that we received a couple of names and
Exactly.
Appoint from there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know how many commissioners there are for the Human Rights Commission? Do we know that?
I don't know the number of all of the commissioners. I know the school committee appoints, previously, we had appointed three, one for one year, one for two years, and one for three years. I don't know the total number of commissioners.
Okay. And so we'll now appoint four?
So this request, my understanding of it, was just for this upcoming year. They just wanted one additional member for the upcoming appointment process. So rather than nominating one, appointing one for this upcoming cycle, they asked that we and the Board of Selectmen appoint two. I believe that's how it was communicated to me.
But doesn't that mean we appoint four?
I think ultimately, my understanding was that it will ultimately expand the number of commissioners on the Human Rights Commission.
Right.
What Mr. Terrell said is accurate in regard to this year's appointments, but I think in the end, it will expand the HRC by two members. I think the Board of Selectmen, if they choose to expand by one, and if we choose to expand by one.
And then we'll appoint one each year, presumably? It'll just cycle through?
Yeah, I think I believe so, as it normally would.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else on HRC? Mr. Leakos.
So I just had the site up. It looks like there are 12 members, including three ex-officios, one of whom is our superintendent. And I was going to recommend, perhaps since we have a couple of weeks, additional weeks, maybe, Dr. Smith, you could put out through your regular communications that there's another opening, and should we solicit some other interests?
We've done that in the past. That's quite a good idea, yeah.
Okay. All right. With the committee's permission, if that's okay, since we've got another opening, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor. Thank you. Okay, so we've hit 7:35, so we can go ahead and enter our school choice public hearing. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move the school committee to open the school choice public hearing.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. That's a roll call vote. Judy, would you mind calling the roll?
Mr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mr. Leakos?
Yes.
Ms. Fortier?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Okay, so we're in our school choice public hearing. We have to do this every year. Dr. Smith, I don't know if there's anything you want to say about this.
I just usually will share my own recommendation, which is that Wakefield has traditionally not been a school choice district. I think it's wise not to be a school choice district in that, right now, we have, you know, really kind of an optimum class size. In some places, maybe a little bit tight in class size, so I just don't think we have the available seats to be a school choice district. That's my recommendation would be not to be a school choice district.
Anything from the school committee on this? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak regarding school choice?
I have one question. Dr. Smith, are you aware of anybody in our surrounding communities that has maybe switched from being not to going to school?
I don't, no. I think those that have traditionally not been school choice have stayed, you know, status quo as we have, and I don't know anyone who's made a switch recently.
I hadn't heard of anybody. I was thinking I would ask.
Yeah. I haven't heard either.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion regarding this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Wakefield Public Schools not be a school choice district for 2018, 2019.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Callanan?
No.
Okay.
I'm ready to vote.
You're ready. All in favor. Thank you. And I just need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move the school committee to close the school choice hearing.
Motion's made and seconded, and that's a roll call vote, too, Judy, if you wouldn't mind.
Mr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mr. Leakos?
Yes.
Ms. Fortier?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so the next point of discussion under chairman's comments tonight is just regarding the appointment of the next superintendent of schools. So we can begin with a general discussion. Obviously, this is an open floor for any member of the school committee who has anything to say regarding the candidates who are up for appointment. So I'll just turn it over and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak. Mr. Markham.
I'll begin. I guess let me first say, if I may, a great thank you to the members of the screening committee. There was an awful lot of work done in a fairly condensed period of time with scheduling and snowstorms and all, but nonetheless, really, yeoman's work had gone into the work of the screening committee from the very beginning, of participation in the open forum that we had at the high school, through the work that we completed last week. So I'd just like to reiterate thanks to those volunteers for an awful lot of work in a, actually, very short period of time. And I think we have been left with, actually, from that process, some very difficult choices. My two cents anyways, or my belief, is that the screening committee brought forward three really excellent candidates, which gave us a lot to ponder. I think it shows the strength and the interest and the viability of the Wakefield Public Schools, with the great interest in people wanting to be our next superintendent, which is a great tribute to certainly Dr. Smith and the school district at large, and really everyone. We had a really strong turnout from a number of applicants and a very healthy process. And I think our interviews last week really showed what a difficult, odd decision that we have. So I guess in addition to thanking the screening committee members and obviously, you know, each of the applicants for their interest in wanting to make Wakefield Public Schools a better place, my, I'll continue, if I may, just my personal thinking as an individual member of the committee, that there's some really important things that have begun in recent years. The school district, Wakefield Public Schools, is an entirely different place than it was, say, five years ago or six years ago, which seems like an incredibly short period of time, but we've come an awful long way, and we have a lot to be grateful for. The leadership that we've had, having effectively three superintendents in those six years, but nonetheless, some really strong leadership, and a really, obviously, great partnership with the town, with the townspeople and the town officials, and helping make some really positive things happen, school by school, and not the least of which was the opening of the Galvin and lots of new infrastructure, and lots of curriculum, and some really things of tremendous value. So I'm of the belief that one of the strongest things that we should be looking for in a new superintendent is both the leadership, obviously, you know, educational strength, educational prowess, a commitment to educational quality, and the types of strategy that have been so widely held and strongly put together by a real good team, which means our leadership, yet some consistency, and some stability. I think stability is a really strong key for what's going to help continue the Wakefield School Department on a really strong pathway. So I think, you know, we're fortunate to obviously have an in-house candidate with that, that I think could bring a lot of that. I know that the other two individuals are really, really, really top quality as well, but I just think that as an individual member, that those, that type of strength and leadership and passion and commitment and stability is really key to the path that we're on.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. Mr. Callanan?
Again, I do want to thank everybody for the process. It's, I think it's been certainly a great number of man-hours and challenges with the snowstorms, and I've been in the position of having to dig through those piles of resumes and have your rubric and try to figure out who matches what you're looking for and who to invite in for interviews. I appreciate the candidates that were sent forward. They were certainly very different candidates from each other. I think that we have some pretty clear choices to make. I have to agree, though, that, you know, one of my biggest concerns is the next superintendent we have needs to be able to provide that continuity. We're on a very good path, and I don't want to see that disrupted. I want it built upon, not taken apart, and have somebody else's, feel like they have to put their own stamp on it or disagree with something, or maybe everybody's got their own style and their own priorities, perhaps, but the general direction we're in and the relationships that have already been built with Mr. Lyons, with the existing administrative staff, we have two very dynamic new principals coming in that I think are going to add a lot of energy to the system, and I think we need a superintendent that can really keep up with that energy and have, you know, the background to know where, not to repeat mistakes that we've already thought something through and come to a decision about it for a particular reason, and can thoroughly explain why and move on from there, and provide that leadership for consistency and know what the plan is without having to learn. So I very much appreciate the other candidates, but I, to me, Mr. Lyons is, you know, head and shoulders above the other candidates at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Callanan. Mr. Leakos.
Thanks. Yeah, I had similar thoughts, I think, to both Tom and Chris. You know, I went into this process with great respect and admiration for Doug Lyons, but I really wanted the process to run its course, and I wanted to see Doug Lyons against his peers. And to me, the process worked for me and for my decision-making anyway, because thanks to Tom and an under your leadership problem with the participation of the screening committee and all the parents and students that took part in that process and the community members, we got three excellent candidates. We got to interview three talented, experienced, committed educators and to have a really rich discussion with each of them. And they all deserved to be where they were. They were all accomplished educators moving upward through a career trajectory that I think, from what I saw, each of them could easily do the job and do it well. But like Chris and Tom, I really feel that continuity is extremely important at this stage of our school system's life and its trajectory. And I was reminded of that, Kim, we were joking a little bit earlier about the Wakefield Educational Foundation event last week, in which Dr. Smith and many others were honored, and Dr. Schreick came back, made a cameo back here in Wakefield, and he gave a terrific speech about his admiration for Dr. Smith. And I was reminded of the power of that relationship, that mentoring relationship, and that growth that comes with a solid, working relationship between two educators who are committed to growth and development. And I've seen that with Doug and with Dr. Smith, and she has mentored Doug, and I think Doug has grown in my conversations with Doug over the last couple of years, just a genuine leader and educator. And I'm going to just quote a couple of things, because I think some of the public doesn't have the benefit of being able to have read Dr. Smith's recommendation for Doug Lyons. So a couple of sentences that I think really capture some of Doug's strengths. She's talking about the things that make a quality superintendent. She makes decisions with integrity, values, and courage despite the pressures of public opinion, a skillful communicator with exceptionally strong interpersonal qualities in order to navigate a complex network of relationships, and provide a clear and focused strategy for the district, valuing continuity and perseverance over time. That's a big set of skills and a complex set of skills, and not everyone has that, but I feel pretty confident that Doug Lyons has those skills and can be the kind of leader we need for this next phase of the Wakefield Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Leakos. Any other members of the school committee? Mr. Massey?
So I just want to say that I was really impressed with all three candidates. In particular, I thought Mr. Falcone, I didn't really know him, I thought his interview was really well. But at the end of the day, after thinking about all three, well, first of all, I do want to give a shout out to the screening committee as well. They put forth three really impressive candidates, and it was a very difficult decision, but at the end of the day, I think an internal candidate is what's best here. We want someone to build upon Dr. Smith's management and leadership. And with Doug, I know there's a proven capable person who's very trusted, and he's very caring with all the students and the parents, and someone to be a good leader in the community. And I've been lucky enough to got to know him over the past couple of years, and I'm very confident putting my vote towards Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Ms. Fortier?
To echo everyone else, we had three exceedingly well-prepared candidates, very, very interested in taking the helm of the Wakefield Public Schools, and I appreciate their time. And of course, the screening committee headed by Mr. Markham, which I know you spent a great deal of time, a lot of time, a whole lot of time with that process. While I value continuity, frankly, that wasn't a piece of what I was really looking at fully in terms of thinking about our next leader. I was really looking for a person that I trust and someone who inspires me to grow as a school committee member, and someone who would inspire the people that this person would work with. So trust and inspiration. One of the benefits that Mr. Lyons has had is that he's been here for three years, but that's like a three-year interview for this person. And I'm not sure if he, you know, started his job here with the intention of becoming a candidate for superintendent, but regardless, we got to see everything, the good, the bad, the ugly, you know, everything that he participated in, that he led, that he took charge of. And I've only been a member for a year, so I don't have the sort of the depth of time with him, but I did review the comments made by the other individuals who met with him during the process. You know, I looked at my notes really closely for all three candidates, and I looked at all of the documents that everyone provided as part of their candidacy, and it became apparent that Mr. Lyons really did rise above. We asked the folks who did participate in the process, you know, are there concerns? Are there strengths? And there were a number of people who would list strengths for Doug and no concerns. And that was telling to me. So sometimes, no information is almost as important as a lot of information. So I fully support the strategic plan and the instructional strategy, but I also see them as living documents, that they need to move when the time comes. And I believe that Doug is that person who can, you know, look at what the situation is, be flexible, be nimble, and respond to it, not for the sake of responding, but from a place of being grounded in experience, but also the work as a collaborator within the district. So I believe that, you know, really, when I think of Mr. Lyons, I think of three things. I think Doug will support his colleagues, his, our children and our district's parents. He'll collaborate with our town, with the community, and with all of our stakeholders. He'll continue to develop the relationships that he's already begun, certainly with school committee, with the town committees, and with union leaders. But most importantly, I believe that Doug will lead our district with a genuine and honest approach, a definitive set of skills necessary to tackle the really tough and really hard parts of this job, and he has a genuine desire to continue to move our Wakefield Public Schools forward. And I really, really think he loves Wakefield. And he may not be from here, and he may not live here, but he knows us, and I can appreciate that a great deal. So I'm throwing my full support behind Doug Lyons.
Thank you, Ms. Fortier. Ms. Morgan?
I agree with basically what everyone said, mostly with Ms. Fortier, what you said about the continuity. That wasn't probably even top 10 of the things that I was looking for. And I personally think change in a district can be good. We had a change agent here a few years ago, and I think we needed a change agent at that time. We've moved the district forward by great strides in the past six years. We have a good plan moving forward. I think Mr. Lyons, his dedication to education is unmatched with some of the other candidates, and he's also demonstrated leadership. We've all seen it. I've personally had a difficult conversation with Mr. Lyons, and the level of professionalism that he showed towards me, and, you know, we never ended up agreeing on what the conversation was about, but we had a respectful conversation, and I think that is something critically important in a leader, to be able to manage situations like that. So I will also fully be supporting Mr. Lyons for our next superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. So I'll also begin with my thanks to the screening committee, all of the members of the screening committee, certainly Mr. Markham for his hard work in organizing that body and in running the meetings. And I will just also add, at doing so at an exceptionally low cost to Wakefield, which is not something that's easy to do, but Mr. Markham pulled it off, so I thank you for that. In evaluating all of the candidates, one thing that I looked for specifically was the degree of passion that I thought they would bring, not simply to the job, not to the schools, but to the community, to Wakefield. That's a difficult thing to evaluate, especially with candidates not having been from Wakefield, not living in Wakefield, but it's something that you're able to drill down upon if you really listen to what folks are saying. And in evaluating all three of the candidates, I got the greatest impression regarding passion from Mr. Lyons. I firmly believe you can hear it in his voice when he says what he says, that he is not simply saying so because this is what he must say, this is what he should say, but because he truly believes it. I believe that that was true when he spoke about curriculum. I believe that was true when he spoke even about how he would run a budget. He believes what he says, and he fights for it. And to Ms. Morgan's point, if you don't disagree with it, he's going to treat you with just as much respect as if you were on the same side. But where I especially got the passion was in the question that I had asked about core values, because core values are very important to me. They're very important to this community. And at the end of the day, when the chips fall as they may, and there's nothing left to make a decision on, your core values are what's going to drive you. And Mr. Lyons has proved to me, not simply in his three years in Wakefield, but even throughout his application process and in the resumes, that he is somebody who is characterized by an intense commitment to core values. So I'm certainly pleased with all of the applicants. They were all qualified. Wakefield truly could not have gone wrong in whoever was appointed, but at the end of the day, I as well will be supporting Mr. Lyons for the next superintendent. And with that, I thank the school committee for that discussion. I just wonder if there might be a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the school committee to appoint Douglas Lyons as the next superintendent of schools pending contract negotiations.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor. Thank you, and congratulations to Mr. Lyons. Subcommittee reports. Finance and Facilities, Mr. Callanan.
The superintendent and business manager, and I quite honestly don't know who else was there, because I was unable to attend FinCom last week. Did present our budget to the finance committee, and to my understanding, we had unanimous approval from the FinCom. And so the budget is set to go. Will come up on April 30 at town meeting, which is a short two weeks away.
Okay. Labor and Personnel, Mr. Markham.
I think we've concluded our work for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Many thanks to you. And Policy and Planning, Ms. Fortier?
There's nothing to report right now.
Great. Thank you. Future dates and agenda items. The next meeting will be Wednesday, April 25. That's because the town election is on the 24th, and as Mr. Callanan mentioned, town meeting will be on April 30. School committee comments. Mr. Callanan.
Well, you put me first, and it's clearly, you know, you had to get an extra meeting in out of your tenure here.
That's right.
But both...
Am I done?
Not yet. In about six, seven minutes, I think. Well, actually, not officially till next week.
Right.
So if something happens...
We can filibuster.
That's right.
We can keep... We do have another meeting upcoming.
You know, we could have some emergency arise. So you're not off the hook yet, but I did want to take the time to thank you and Ms. Morgan for your... and Ms. Morgan for your, your, you know, your dedication, you know, the amount of time you, with the people spend on this committee, I don't think the public truly understands at times. It's not, it, this, the movement of this body is not just coming to the, you know, the WCAT studio once every couple of weeks and, and reading some materials and making some votes. There's, there's a lot more goes into it than that. There's a, you know, your subcommittee work, attending all kinds of school functions and being, you know, participating in, in the school community in general. And you both have done an exemplary job of that, and, you know, you, you've approached every major decision over the years with a lot of thoughtfulness, and I certainly appreciate your, your effort and wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leocas.
Thanks. I echo Chris's comments. Thank you both for your service. I also want to mention, of course, that you both served as chairs, which, as I know, is, you know, and sometimes double the work, so that's really very much appreciated. And of course, most recently, Rob, your chairmanship this last year, appreciate the work you put into it, especially around this superintendent search process and leading us to this point tonight, and very much, very much appreciate it. And I hope, I wish you the best in your next endeavors, and I know you're headed to law school, so if I, among my many lawyer friends, I'm going to add you to the list if I ever need legal help. So, so wanted to thank you both. I wanted to congratulate the Wakefield Educational Foundation award winners, Dr. Smith I mentioned earlier, but also Catherine Dingra and Adam Collentoni. It was, it was just wonderful to see them, as well as all the school and service-based volunteers who were honored. It was a really, really nice event. And finally, I want to, for those watching, I want to make sure that we encourage everyone to get out and vote in the town election next Tuesday. We've got some great candidates for school committee and for the board of selectmen and other offices, and it's important for everybody to get out and vote. So, wanted to, with that plug in there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Leocas. Ms. Fortier.
I also wanted to encourage everyone to, to get out and vote. It's a critical responsibility, and being a small town, every vote counts, so please, please go out and, and select your candidates of choice. And we do have a great number of folks who are interested in school committee, since serendipitously, we have two people who are leaving. Kate, I so appreciate your individual, your preparation, and you always, you always have voted, and you've always reacted based on what your own principles are. And I really think that that's important, that people know. It's hard to be prepared. It's easy to not be prepared, but Kate has always been, to every meeting, knowing what's happening contributes to the conversation, and, and when she speaks, it is with a lot of knowledge, so thank you. You've been a great role model for me.
Thank you.
And Rob, you've been an incredibly generous chair. I am old enough to be your mother, but I, but you've been, you know, just very helpful in my first year here, and always willing to answer any question I've had, and respond so quickly. It's really incredible, so I wish you all the best in your law school search.
Thank you.
And, and thanks again for everything.
Thank you. Mr. Markham.
So, let me also add, in addition to my colleagues, a great level of thanks to, to both Rob and Kate for their, the work, the energy, the spirit, the fun, the camaraderie. It's, it's, and, and all of those things are easy, and all of those things are hard. We've had some really interesting days, some difficult decisions. We haven't always landed in the same place, but the best part of that is that's what it's all about. We don't have to land in the same place to be colleagues and peers and collegial and friends, and that's, that's what I'm going to miss the most with both of you. It's been really, it's been a genuine pleasure. The word preparedness, I would wholly agree with, with Ann in, with, in terms of both, of both of you. I would also add depth, that the conversations that we've, we've held in, you know, open session, on-camera, subcommittee meetings, and, and great depth, and, and that involves preparedness and research and thoughtfulness. That has really only, frankly, inspired me. Ann talked about inspiration earlier, and I get inspired in many ways by our work and by each other, and I like to think that, that this work makes each of us a better school committee member, and I know that both of you have made me a better school committee member and a, and a better, you know, public advocate for education, and it's been tremendously meaningful. It can be a thankless job, and there's no, and there's no, you know, the, I mean, we don't, lots of decisions that are, that are made around this table aren't always the most popular, which makes it a thankless job, but there's often slices of information, some big, some small, that have to go into, to the depth and the thoughtfulness that you both have brought to this table. But even though the job can be sometimes a thankless, it is genuinely gratifying, and that's also something that, that the type of work, even in my remarks earlier, in the six years, I just use that as a, as a term, in the six years that, well, certainly Kate's been on six years, all of those six years. We've come an awful long way, and it hasn't just been because of the leadership of, of three different superintendents and the breaking ground that we really needed to do, and, but it's been because of the work, frankly, of the school committees over those times. We've been able to stand up at town, in, in town, and ask what we think is needed. Sometimes we won, sometimes we didn't, and that's okay, too. But that takes depth, and that takes our leadership, and it has been a genuine pleasure to serve with both of you for, for hours, weeks, months, and, and years, and I'm going to miss you both, and wish you nothing but the best. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
I just want to thank both you guys for your service. Truly has been a pleasure serving with you the last two years here, and one thing in particular for both of you that, that really stood out is just extremely approachable ever since I came here. You know, you always made it known that you're just a phone call away, and that means a lot to me as a newcomer coming on, and, and, you know, just same as everyone else, but it really, it really stood out to me, and I truly appreciate it, and I know you guys will do great, and hopefully we'll see you in the near future.
Thank you.
Kate, you're going to have to wait to turn a moment, because Dr. Smith has asked if she could say something.
I just wanted my opportunity to say thank you to both of you as well. Kate, I've just learned over the years what an amazing person you are, and I also appreciate just how thoughtful and prepared, impeccably prepared you always are. I'm just taken with the level of service you've given to your community for this length of time, and such important service to the children of the Wakefield Public Schools, and you are awesome, and I'm just really grateful for you. And Robbie, I call him Robbie, because I can say it publicly.
Secrets out.
I, I just continue to be blown away with who you are as a young man. You know, you mentioned core values in regard to Mr. Lyons, but I would consider you one of the people in my life that I've known that has just the most deeply held core values, that just center everything that you do, and I continue to really admire you for that, and I just think you are a rising star, and I cannot wait to continue to be inspired by whatever it is that you do. I will be cheering for you always. It's really been tremendous having you as the chair this year, and I've enjoyed every minute. And it's also been so much fun to watch the two of you. You guys are great friends. You have a great sense of humor, and it's been a lot of fun to just, kind of, watch you in action as well. So, I'd like to thank both of you on my chair this year and a couple of years ago. Thank you both very much for everything.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, anything to say?
No, thank you all for your kind words. Everybody, please remember to get out and vote. I'm confident that you're going to be left in good hands with whoever the winners are of this upcoming election. I'm looking forward to seeing the good work that you can continue to do. Dr. Smith, I wish you luck in your retirement, and congratulations to Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. So, the irony of this is, we talked a lot about preparedness, but I intentionally did not prepare anything to say right now, because I've been avoiding it for about three years. So, I did just jot down a, a list of, a list of a few people who I would like to thank. First, I just, I just thank God so much for ever giving me the opportunity in my life to have, to have had this incredible experience. I thank my school committee colleagues. As Mr. Markham said, we all truly do make each other better, and, and I know that all of you at this table and all of the previous folks who have been at this table, who I've worked with, have, have given me so much to think about and have, and have contributed to my decisions and my decision-making process, and that did make me a better school committee member. I also thank Judy, we have a great clerk at the Wakefield School Committee. She was very, very helpful when I became chair. She's an excellent resource, so Judy, thank you for everything that you've done. The administration and the school department colleagues, it's been a pleasure and a privilege working with everyone. Everyone is so committed to Wakefield and to the students, and that is inspiring. And because I won't be at Dr. Smith's last meeting, I do have to just say, Dr. Smith, it's been such a pleasure and a privilege to have worked with you. I actually wrote down something that is, that has been said quite a bit tonight, which is that you have a gift, one that I hope to pursue in my own life, which is that you inspire people. When you talk and when you lead, people are inspired to become a better version of themselves, and that is just so rare, but it's indicative and it's clear in everything that you do. So, thank you. Thank you to WCAT, who are really the true heroes of all of these meetings, Tom Stapleton and his staff. Thank you to Mark Sardella for always covering the school committee fairly in the Wakefield daily item. My friends who have been so supportive, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention someone who I actually ran against for school committee, but who became a truly great friend, Kate Morgan. Thank you. And finally, of course, my family, who has been by my side through what is often a difficult process. I'd be remiss if I didn't, as I've shared at this table before, talk about my grandfather, who's, was absolutely instrumental in my coming to this table. He was somebody who I called upon a great deal while he was on, on this earth, and when he went to be with the Lord, I continued to call upon him. So, thank you, Papa. I'm standing on the shoulders of a true giant, and I will never forget that. And finally, thank you to the amazing, amazing people in the town of Wakefield. You have a truly tremendous school committee, and I just thank you for the privilege and the honor of being a part of it. It's been truly the greatest honor of my entire life. Thank you. Okay, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I don't think so. Again, nothing can be fair with, anyways, tremendous. Mr. Chairman, for the last time, I move the school committee adjourn the special school committee meeting of April 17, 2018.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.